It is nine o'clock on Monday, November 23rd, 2015. And I'm calling Potter County District Court. Today we have Skip Chisholm from Rock Church. Love that name. He's going to come into our prayer for us today. He's going to show his hand.
Will you pray with me? God, how awesome it is to acknowledge you this morning. You're the Creator and Sustainer of all things. And Father, we love you. And how awesome it is to turn our attention to you before we get on about the business of the day. So Father, I just want to thank you for this great city. Thank you for this great county. And I thank you for the people who live here. Lord, I just thank you for the men and the women who've answered the call to leave Potter County. Father, I ask you to bless their efforts here. Give them wisdom to make godly decisions that honor you today, Lord. Father, I ask that you bless their lives, bless their homes, and bless their families. And Lord, lastly, we just ask your protection. Protect us from those who would do us harm to this city, to this state, to this nation. Father, we love you. It's in Jesus' precious and holy name we pray again.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
While we're on the subject of praying, might keep Ginger Nelson and her family in your prayers. She is an attorney here in town. She's a good friend of mine. I remember if he was hit and killed by a drunk driver Saturday night. Call the station himself there in pain right now. Okay, so number one, recognition of minutes from the November 9th, 2015, November 23rd, 2015 Potter County District Court meetings. Any questions on that? Or if not, so good. No. Number two, or I'm going to skip down to number three. We typically do the budget minutes before we do the vouchers. So we have four pages of budget minutes. Carrie, if you want to explain why these are all here today.
On 17th of... We told you we were prepared that we'll have the permission to go and do clean out budgeting after yours goes out. That's what we see here. This is just getting all of our bottom line savings to close out here. If there are any questions, I'd like to touch on that.
So Carrie, just to make sure I'm following. On page, there's a few fund balances that are referenced, three on page three and four.
These are all in our special funds.
Does that close out for you?
Except for any audit interest that I personally want to issue. Yes.
Move we... We need to have a motion or disrepute. It says disrepute.
He says to recognize when you go. Okay, so recognize. Go back to number two, vouchers. To consider and act upon the approval of the voucher to access Potter County Attorney's Office for the period of November 4th, 2015 through November 18th, 2015. Check numbers 165-596, 3165-833, and our transfers number 641 through 643 in the amount of $3,147,187.65. If you have any questions or comments before we get the motion.
I do have a couple of questions, Judge, from the court. Page 12 of 32, Carrie. Check number 165710. The top of the page, Architexis. Looks like a fee of $103,000 for architectural services. And the description is a little cut off, but I do see the Sheriff Department. So I'm assuming that's the strategic planning initiative.
It is, I believe this was 90% of this thematic design.
Correct.
And where are we, Carrie? You may not have this figure with you, but with our total expenses for Architexis on all of the strategic planning.
I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Okay, maybe some help. Okay. And then my second question, page 11 of 32. Check number 165707. Looks like board member dues for Emerald Tri-State exposition. Commissioner Church, I think you sit on that board on behalf of the commission. Is that correct?
Not the only one that...
Oh, okay. Judge James.
I'm the one that came in.
Okay, perfect.
Mine just came in, just Friday, I think.
And then would it be possible to maybe get an agenda item just to keep the full commission in board, maybe as you meet as a board?
We meet once a year.
Okay.
And that's in March usually.
So that would be great if we could at least be kept informed. And then to follow up on that, also the tiers. I recently read that tiers has approved an abatement for apartment, if I remember correctly. Could have that incorrect. And the process is that the commission should be allowed to give input. I don't think that came to us.
Okay, if you will.
Okay, perfect. That's all my questions.
I'm going to show up and bring that to us.
Perfect. Thank you.
I move that we approve of the vouchers as the local party put in the group period as the side.
Second. Have the motion and the second on favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you. Insurance report, to recognize the insurance fund report. Okay, is there anything unusual or more to talk about?
There's not anything unusual on this report. But I did want to make the court aware that we can expect some large claims coming out of Baker and Dallas, probably over the next couple of months. It's my understanding that there's a surgical team that's being assembled and will generate some substantial claims down the road.
For different cases or specifically for one page?
And I'm not sure at this point exactly what all the trends are, but it looks like at this point that it could likely be some significant claims. And we're just wanting to make you aware that that could be coming over the next couple of months.
It came out, will be vetted by the insurance committee. Is that correct? Does that committee kind of review our fund balance and...
If we get into a situation where the fund balance is low or sinking, then at that point, we will address those things. I'm not sure exactly how large the claims will be. I just suspect that they would be significant. Our fund balance is in good shape currently, so I just wanted to make you aware that we could expect some claims that likely will be significant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so recognized, number five, treasures report, to recognize the monthly treasures report. Good morning. Okay, I did want to visit with you just a moment about our general fund. As you know, this, this morning on your check register, we had 2.8 million. That was just a general fund. And so this morning in Texpool, I only have $398,000 invested in Texpool and $31,000 in Texpool Prime. Last week, I've been $2 million from Texpool over to the A and B General Fund, which this morning is 4.6 million. So cash as of this morning is $5,092,911.49. We still have the $7 million in seeders. With payroll next week, I'm not sure about our expenditures. I looked, last year, our first deposit was $5 million about December 23rd, in our first tax dollars. So it's possible that we make it till tax dollar deposits come. But there's also the possibility that I will have to get into that $7 million. So I did visit with Emerald Ashelbank, and they are even willing for us to just do it in increments. And so that's probably the route I'll take if in the event I do have to get into that at this time. So just kind of...
Well, Leanne, weren't we kind of expecting a delay with the timing of when everything went out? I mean, we were expecting some of this stuff.
We talked about it because of statements, but Sherry, didn't you feel like we'll still be okay, that if we're, the scheduling issues still be average? How's the market doing overall? Texpool is 12 and 19 at this point. I did meet with my investment committee also last week, and we have some things that we want to talk to you. It'll be on the next agenda for some diversification. And we'll have some other ways to be more talking to you like that. And we'll have that set up by taxes. So that'll be all. Thank you. Any questions? So recognized. Number six, tax appraisal to consider and act upon the approval of the Potter County Tax Roll for the 2015 tax year, not 2016. That's probably my fault. I will take it 90% of the blame. I'm caught off shore. You may be saying that. And I may re-change it, so sorry. So is this about normal then?
Yes.
Hopefully it won't be normal.
Yeah, it will be.
You guys have any questions on that?
Sherry, the only question I have is on the collection rate. So I know that averages a little from year to year, but there's a fairly high collection rate in the office. Are we currently...
We run about below 98%. And that, we get over 100% of the time, like one comes from the previous years too.
I move we approve the Potter County Tax Roll for the 2015 tax year. Second.
Have the motion and the second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much. Thank you. Number seven, elections, to hear a report from the election office on how vote centers functioned in November 3rd election, and to approve the 2016 Joint Primary Election Services Contract for the March 1st primary election. Good morning.
Good morning. You guys have a fairly lengthy report in front of you of the rest of the election division Secretary of State. That's kind of the final piece required about the Secretary of State's offices as a report on the level we did. And this includes some results from surveys that were done of the voters as they were leading the polls on election day. Approximately 35%, which is a high number statistically. It should be fairly accurate as to the overall feelings regarding voters. 97% liked having a choice, 3% do not like having a choice. If you get down to positive, 90% were positive, and 8% were neutral, 2% were negative. The negatives, I can tell you, were people who, for the most part, did not find out where to go until election day. And in one case, just as an example, they went to a school in which we had not voted in a long time. And that school had posted a sign that told them to go to a church where we were not voting, where there was a sign that told them where they should vote. So by the time they got to the poll, this particular person was markedly upset, as you can imagine. And so, but that was really most of the negatives. I think that we reached approximately 85% of the people knowing where they should be going on election day, which is really good. When you look at the efforts that we made, I guess there's always someone who does not know, and should be frustrated by the time they get there. The positive comments were just overwhelmingly convenient. It's easier to get in and out of. I really like this. That does not mean we're ignoring the negative ones. I'm very happy on the negative ones. I think the two that we heard over and over, not over and over, but several times, were some people don't like voting in a business and some people don't like voting in churches. And on the flip side, we got just as many people who said, "I love going to a place I'm going to be shocking anybody," or "I love voting in a church." So, you know, jury's out there. The beauty of the vote centers is if you don't like voting in a church, or you don't like voting in a business, you don't have to. You have choices. So anyway, these are, that's basically the reports. You kind of see some statistics there at the end. I have contacted Bell Avenue Church of Christ because they function so well that I would really like them to be our vote site rather than cash center plus. The voters liked it. They just can be easy to work with, and so I will be making that request once we get to the primary. But I have spoken with them, and it worked off of them, and they said, "Bring it on." But any questions about the charts, the statistics, or any...
Well, then, I remember at one point, and I don't know if this went live with vote centers, an app or a website where you could see where you were and see which vote center was around you, and you didn't know where to go. Is that cool live this time?
And that is, that's scary. It's PotterCountyVotes.com, and that is our website. The other thing about that was, you can see where to go. It also is mobile friendly. But we also had the ability at this election, we had our sites call us. If they got, had a line that was going to be more than 20 minutes, and we would flag it on the website. So during the day, I know Missoula was on a wait most of the afternoon, and Bell Avenue went on a wait at one time, and High Hill went on a wait at one time. We were able to block that on this app and on this website. So if a voter had been leaving their office at 5:00, they could make a different choice if they wanted to.
Because they could see that it was, had a red or it was alerted.
Yes, it had a red, it said wait time possible. And then as soon as it went off of a wait, as soon as the line got down to 10 minutes at the most, then we would remove that flag from the website. So it did function.
Is there any way to track how many people hit that website to look at a polling location? That would be interesting.
I think there is. I would have to ask technology that question. Yeah.
Technology's here. I see.
Is there any way to track?
There are ways to track those statistics. We don't have them on the website right now. We definitely can't.
All I know is that I saw a lot of police officers, they don't know what's up. What was that?
What were you saying?
You know, we're there every day.
Yes.
Thank you, Melan.
And then the next thing is these contracts, and they are basically the same contract that you had in the primary two years ago. It just was a change in dates, but I need you guys to give me your blessing before I have this signed.
Did they change something at all? Nothing?
I make a motion that we approve the 2016 Joint Primary Election Services Contract for the March 1st primary election.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand please. Five to zero, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, then thanks for everything you did.
Thank you, Melan.
At number eight, Constable Proceed to Purchase of Best, to Consider and Act Upon Transfer of $100 in Equipment Repair and Maintenance to Allow for the Purchase of Body Own, Best and Inventory are either outdated or incorrect size. This is for Georgia. Move the motion.
We did not anticipate this need at that time. We thought pollution would be able to use a best in inventory, but we found that there is not one label, so we would just like to come back to it above adding the best.
Okay, have the motion.
I move that we relax the transfer of $800 in Equipment Repair and Maintenance to Allow for the Purchase of Body Own, to take priority. Second.
Have the motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you. Number nine, Interloable Agreement, Anindum Texas Conference of Urban Counties Tax Share Prosecutor, to Consider and Act Upon the Approval of Anindum to the Agreement of the Texas Council of Urban Counties for 2016, and the county judges signing their agreement. There you are.
Push my way, please.
Yeah, I am. You were sitting over there all afternoon.
All the, all the members of the Texas Prosecutor signing in local agreement. And what's happening is each year, they have to amend that because of work agreement, budget, and cost allocations. So they have to, each year, they're going to have to do an amendment, what I'm understanding, and just set the budget for that year, you know, the kind of year and that sort of thing. One of the things they did, I think, changed is the payment of allocations. I think that folks paid it out in the year, and it was causing a bit of a problem because they didn't have money to kind of like, to go get the money to October and December, give the decent little short money. And so they were experiencing that kind of issue, and so they designated it, two thirds of it gets paid up front this month, and the recent 15th, and then last payment, I mean, it was, let's see, October 16th. I haven't broken it down, so the lights will have off by the minute, to make sure they could get all the costs paid for. And then, of course, they set the budget at one million, 540, 540,000. And in the script, I can also have shows where capital cost, breaks it down between managers of the Texas Prosecutor, that's how you know it's in other blocks. And then, after that, there's a list of all the counties. And all the counties, and then they will be the only ones to join in this next year that's what the cost would cost them to join, and the capital cost for them.
It's based on a population 2010. Since this is the last...
I know, it's just things. What is, does anybody really know our population? Are they... Okay.
It's somewhere around...
120 to 130.
Let's grow up a bit.
In Randall Counties, it's somewhere around...
120. Right, based on the last census in 2010, we're the largest county population wise, but that will change by 2020. I don't know about that. So Randall, anywhere on here, does it show, and maybe it's too early, does it show what opportunity we might have for dollars back as more counties come on?
No, there's not any.
That's not anything on?
No. That's part of the school.
And maybe, yes. But some of the counties are already getting dollars back, those that have been on for some time, right? That I would imagine like Dallas or Midland or Tarrant.
Once we got in, and it was some portion of it, it was...
Okay, okay.
But always I know that the last, last one actually got in, Dallas County was ahead of her. Dallas County was ahead of us, but we got implemented before Dallas County did. Because Dallas County is so huge, it presented problems that we didn't present. Also, out of the five counties that actually used the program, we didn't use the program. I've been told by more than one person from the Texas Washington, that we're absolutely utilizing more of that program than anybody else. And so, they, they came to that, and I said, "Well, we didn't buy it, about to use it." So, but thanks for working out pretty well for us. We still...
How many's it been? It's still got some problems?
Well, I wouldn't call them problems. It's just things that you wind up, that we identified as we needed, doesn't like it, to add, make it happen, type thing. Personally, I haven't had it last time to get it taken. But some of the things that we needed for them to tweak for us, then we could go on and do, we could do what I call the hot topic things first, that we didn't really need to tweak first. Then sometimes, because we're going, hey, get that thing to us, then they're not getting it fully tested, and we get it, and then we find the problem, and then that is the problem. But it's just, I'm colorblind, and this is what's going on, because we all could, we could be using the vast, 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 and short businesses.
So we do, I have one final question. I'm looking back on this grid that you mentioned.
I think it takes something else.
Yes, so the capital cost and allocation. So right now, it has Potter County in this 276,000 buckets, if you will, which I, maybe this isn't fair to say, but I kind of feel like that's baked into what we, we just went live, that's probably part of our expenses.
That's, that's our capital cost. That's why our capital cost is over there.
That's what we were projecting.
There were two different numbers.
Yes.
That's the one number by itself on the capital cost.
Okay. And so if we get this every year, and the scope that comes to the Commissioner's Court to approve every year, and it looks like the increase in capital cost increased based on features and capabilities added to the software at about 1.29 million. Will that continue to increase from year to year?
It will keep adding, thanks to it.
Do we have anything built into the contract, like a cap of what that should increase?
Okay. You don't pay that capital cost every year. No, we're not, you're not paying this.
Oh, we're paying just the third and a half.
You're not paying this every year. All you're paying for now is the operating and maintenance costs, which is the page back toward the package. 25,000, you're paying 25,000 in December 15th.
Okay.
7,000, 8,000 in October 16th. Everything else is all unpaid.
Okay. So this is just, just showing a breakdown?
If they add something to it, it does cost us.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
Yes, I move that we approve the Addendum to the Guarantee with the Texas Counselors. Of Urban Counties for 2016, authorize Karen Jones to sign the agreement for the tax year.
Have a second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Go ahead, let me call this. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Do you sign it?
I will. I'll just do it right. You'll have to get to the paper. You would like to sign it too. Yeah. Number ten, Resolution, Texas Indigent Defense Commission to Consider and Act Upon the Resolution for the Indigent Defense Formula Grant Program. Just here.
This is a grant that we have submitted to the last year. We said we would not pay the $8,000 for time.
It's number nine.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for the Indigent Defense Formula Grant Program as presented to the court.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much. Number eleven, computer terminal usage. This is the last time I want to talk about this, I promise. I talked to Judge Ford, and he understands now that one computer will be enough in the attorney lounge, and that we will do one subscription, one single user or whatever. Well, I think we picked Westlaw. And we'll see how that works out. And the rest of them, Dave, I'm assuming we've heard back from the city and everything's...
We have, and that's, the contract is on its way back to me.
Okay.
Right now, as we speak and understand. So I think, so they've approved it, then I think our IT guys have met and talked about it, how to get set up the mechanics of certified equipment with private subscription, I think. But Jason's going to have some conversations with the city about that last year.
Okay.
So we're all ready to get it.
Okay, good. So, yes.
I don't need you to send that updated contract, Dave. Do we need to address that, of us also to have that updated contract at this one user?
I guess we are authorized, I just didn't say so.
And just, just so you know, the reason that they need this one is because sometimes people are up in court, and they will get court subpoena on the, on the case, and they have to run down to use a computer to look up something. Or sometimes in the middle of a trial, they'll have to come down and look up, and that is the convenience of that. Just having to have that there is what they need, so we're going to keep on there.
Judge, Carrie, the fee, are we going with the, which application? I know we vetted two of them.
Westlaw.
Westlaw. Westlaw, the, and one more user is how much?
Seven or something like, just under eight hundred and forty months, seven sixty.
A year. Or a month?
It's expensive.
So Judge, are we going to be doing, I don't know, a sign in sheet to do some kind of analysis if anybody's using that in the next three months or four months? Like if they can sign in, that they came to the computer?
Sure they have to. Can track the time and how many hits when they're on.
Yeah.
It won't tell who it is, but.
Yeah.
It will track how much it's being used.
But how will it know it's that user versus a user that we have set up at the library? Is it a specific user that we would be able to track here?
They track IP address.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. This will be only for attorneys, not for the public.
Right, but the expense, because I think we kind of debated, that's essentially two law libraries. And we weren't sure what the utilization would be.
It turned out to be seventy-seven days out of the two hundred and forty-nine days the county was open that that was used. And it turned out to be twelve minutes of those days, out of those days, four minutes per day.
So Judge, are you recommending that we re, reconvene in three months or six months? Or what is an appropriate?
Yeah, I want to keep, but I keep an eye on it. I hate to take it out, I mean, because they do need it, but. And I don't know.
And, and keep in mind, we are currently collecting the law library fees that will be asked.
What we were hoping to use that money to save as opposed to, to adding in another user. Right, that was the whole initiative to centralize the law library.
I was not aware.
Law library fees, the, the probably is not. Parameters you have to follow, how you can spend it, you see, over savings. Okay, this is, and we've checked on that in regard to, because we didn't think about that as well. And I think as far as providing for law library services this way at both locations, this city and the law library and, and this one. So I, now is this, this, this terminal have access to the internet, not just Westlaw except that? No, we don't. The one law, I mean, the one that the attorney can have.
I'll check and see how we have the others set up.
I'm just curious, but I mean, you know, who knows? I mean, it might be feasible sometime just to, they might be able to just get by with internet access at some point. You know, Westlaw, because there's a lot of resources available online, free legal research that might be the need to somebody needs to look up something quick. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just saying, making that's.
So Judge, just to make sure I'm following before we have a motion and take a vote. Um, we're gonna, I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna review the utilization of that user. Um, is three months, is six months?
I think it's two, three months. I think we just add them three months and see how it goes.
I make a motion to approve the relocation of one computer terminal from the law library to the attorney lounge. And to pay for one user subscription through Westlaw. And to be reevaluated in three months based on utilization of the user.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Thank you. Number twelve, local government corporation to provide an update of the local government corporation.
Um, the LGC met on November eleventh and November eighteen. I'm going to run through our agenda and just give you some highlighted points for the calendar. So it was shared at the LGC meeting on the eleven. Um, the parking, project parking update, it needs to be completed by March of twenty seventeen. So that is the, the parking garage tentative bids as early as January of twenty sixteen to go out. The techs dodge street skate project, there are public hearings that were the next steps in early spring construction. Excel Energy in the headquarters, you see that, that's currently under construction. The convention center hotel, they're currently in a site prep mode. They have turned the dirt and expecting in April of twenty seventeen. Of course, that's all tentative, but April twenty seventeen. Um, hence the parking garage has to be opened by March of twenty seventeen. I'm going to share that. Uh, there's quite a bit of discussion with the new board members of the LGC about amending bylaws. In particular, ex officio members, which you know, we, we have an ex officio seat. DAI has an ex officio seat and the city, which is the, the city manager filled that role. There was a lot of discussion, but at the end, there was no action taken. Um, the idea was to leave the, the ex officio seats kind of stabilized, if you will, for some time. Uh, but they were open to allowing the ex officio members onto potential committees. So for Potter County specifically, our seat, we have not, had not previously been invited to the subcommittees. That, the one change that did happen in the bylaws prior to this, this kind of new council coming on. The power, if you will, of the subcommittees was at discretion of the president. They would discern who would join the subcommittees. That has been moved to the full board, so the full board will decide who will have those subcommittees and what those subcommittees will look like. So that's a lot of the current discussion of what is appropriate now. Uh, the parking garage, we saw some schematics. We had a lot of discussion about the parking garage and safety and spots. There's a total of seven hundred and fifty-four spots. And the first floor is going to be retail. There are, there's room for eighteen tenants, but they're expecting about twelve tenants of what that will look like. And then we opened to public comment, there was quite a bit of public comment about having additional public meetings in the evening. To help educate and allow the citizens to have input through the process. So that continues to be a theme. And Melissa Daly indicated she would work with LGC to help have more lunch and learns. The meeting on the eighteenth was the first meeting with the new, uh, pro town, if you will, city manager, Terry Childers. Um, and where the LGC direction was what was really towards a new feasibility study or a roadmap. And so I think that has gotten a little bit of a negative attention in terms of, uh, we want to use the feasibility study that's been out for quite some time. But how to get it more updated with what, uh, the discussions are on the MPEV. And so the LGC operates at, as the direction of the city council. So the city council did formally move, um, last Tuesday, gave the direction to the LGC to start looking at what an MPEV can and will look like. I think that's my update and, um, we're scheduled to meet the first week in December, and so I'll put that back on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number thirteen, Bishop Ranches road improvements assessment procedure to consider and act upon providing time, terms, and conditions of payment. And default of the assessment of property owners' benefit for road improvements to Bishop Ranches.
And, and so we'll pass on this, I don't expect any formal action, but I did, Dave and I did have an opportunity to speak of what I was requesting. And, and just for the, to inform the full court, what I'm basically looking for under this agenda item. We have agreed to move forward to, for the work from Bishop Ranches. And I was looking for a one step type of process of when the work is done, um, which department, whether that's Adine or the tax office. I've learned it can't be the tax office because of the statute, but who is it that's going to apply the formula? And mail that out to the residents so they know how much they're supposed to pay after the work is done and how long they have to pay it. Whether it's thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, uh, whatever that process is and when the payment is due year to year. And this is a ten year agreement, so if we're not all here in ten years, um, and someone is delinquent, what that process is. So I'm not looking for a, a long contract at all, really just probably ten steps of what will happen. And ideally, I shared with Dave, uh, we definitely have some time. I mean, that, that, that's a given. But just so before the work is done, we know what the process is, so it's not a surprise to them, being the residents or us. And we have that formal process down. So I think Dave can keep me honest here, we were going to look at maybe up to the first of the year. Uh, but I did want to inform the court kind of what I was looking for for that agenda item.
Yes, my, my concern is why is it coming from there? It shouldn't come from the liaison like the road and bridge and having some problems with that.
Okay, so there will be no action taken today.
Correct, okay.
I'd be happy to work with you, Dave, but everybody understands that this was agreed, that there would be no payments till after the work is done. Is there any work being done right now?
Yeah.
Right now, then, we were trying to do the survey. It's going to be next year. So let's, uh, keep our hats on and not get so excited.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner, I absolutely, point well taken. Um, and I'm just coming from a perspective of this is very new territory for the county. We have never done anything like this, so I'm sure I'm absolutely taking a precautionary step.
We haven't done it. We haven't done it before, but other counties have. And that can, it can be worked out very simply. I think that it should be me working with that group of people since I've worked with them all the way along.
I'm welcome to do that, I'm just let the policy, thank you.
Okay, number fourteen, Potter County Memorial Stadium lease contract acceptance of acceptance of improvements to consider and act upon recommendation in regard to recognizing required improvements to the stadium. Yes, but this.
Uh, well, Carrie and the, and Commissioner Kelly and I have been working on this.
Okay.
Carrie, if you want to tell us about the recap.
Well, I'm just providing y'all the recap of invoices that we had to commit for and trying to determine whether it was an improvement or maybe it's. And I'll see that in that document, it came up with one hundred and five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five cents that we would be applying to the improvements to the stadium.
How much was that?
Well, five eight one eight.
And, and Judge, just for the court, um, in terms of the contract. So the first year of the contract, Southern Independent was required to make improvements of sixty-eight thousand, that's year one. And then year two or subsequent years are fifty thousand. So anything over the sixty-eight thousand mark would roll over into year two. And so Commissioner Kelly and I, um, have sat on that committee, have been working with Stephanie Tucker, Southern Independent. So we got a round of invoices that were delivered. We met as a committee to start to, to dive through what would count potentially as an improvement or a maintenance. Any of those that we had questions on, we pulled Stephanie back in and Dave and Carrie, uh, worked with us to, to kind of discern what category that, that meant. And so this should be very transparent to Southern Independent as well. They were absolutely a part of this process.
Do we know who the new manager is going to be?
It's not, not ever to share with us.
Is that, is that, is it maybe a time to step back to reevaluate?
Well, there's a little difference, uh, the season that, uh, I've read in the paper, that twenty-five home games here and twenty-five home games and.
Was it Grand Prairie? Airhogs?
Man, it's.
Going to rename the areas now.
I think we may have to relook at the contract within, uh, what we're doing.
As long as they're in compliance with contract, they don't have to play any, they don't have to do anything out there. I mean, yeah, I mean, if you want to approach them about renegotiating contract, you certainly have the right to do that. But if they say no, there's really not too much to do with that as long as they're in compliance with the contract.
And to your point, Commissioner Vaughn, I will share that I, I did receive a call Friday, if I remember correctly, when, um, the league sent out a press release about the merger, if you will, of Southern Independent with the two, um, the two teams. I, I was not made aware of that and I called the judge to see if anyone at Potter County was made aware of that, because I couldn't give a public statement, we weren't informed of that time. Um, I did call Ms. Tucker just out of cheer, I, I don't really know what to share. Um, she did inform me, and I certainly can speak for Southern Independent, that, uh, the twenty today or, or prior to this change, approximately fifty games were played, um, in home, at home. So that shift would be twenty-five, but they were also potentially looking at some new, um, initiatives to play something else in that stadium. And that something else is certainly out of my purview. Uh, but it may, to your point, it may be worth at least discussing what's going to happen in our current stadium for the next two years.
I guess I'd be a little afraid of the contract, they might want to cut the, the rent.
They don't pay anything on rent.
Yeah. Cut nothing. It's happened to nothing. Well, they could.
And Ms. Tucker has done a phenomenal job with improvements. I think as a committee, um, even though we had some healthy debate about what counted, what didn't count. Um, I, I think we all could stand back and say there were more improvements probably than last year. And we can see that at the stadium.
Absolutely, but she's the one that ended up. She's put a lot, a lot of her own into your question about that. It's still worked out.
Has she stepped down?
Yes.
Okay, so I need.
I think I meet this guy someday.
So, right, I don't think anybody's ever met him.
Yeah, he's, uh.
Have you?
I've never met him face to face, but I, I did talk to him actually on the phone last week. I ran into this agenda and he did say he would like to come and meet us, whatever it may be this one day. But he said, at some point, I would like to come to the commissioner's podium.
I've been on that, I've been here for seven years and I've never been, as far as I know, he's never been there at all. I know during the time that, uh, Stephanie, the president, Mark was here, he, he never came down.
Yeah, Mark, you were making.
Anyway, I don't, so you did actually talk to a guy named Gary Ellison. Okay.
Yeah.
At least that's who he said he was, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion and a second.
I move we approve the. And recognize the required improvements.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Um, Judge, the one thing I will add is if anybody would like the actual invoices to review them at, at your own, uh, you know, purview, Dave reside in Carrie's office. Uh, there are some, and Dave helped me here, I may not call it correctly, but there are some that are proprietary and kind of, we feel like might be confidential in terms of a business agreement. So, um, if it was a trade of some type, uh, so without divulging all that, that's why they, all the invoices were not included in the packet, but that is available to each commissioner, I'm assuming so. Is that right, David and Carrie?
Yes, but we, we've asked, we had a request, public information request, uh, a couple of weeks ago for those, just as a precaution, we sent them down to the county general's offices. They're really not our invoices and asked for their opinion about whether any of those were confidential or not. So we're, we're preying on that opinion still, so.
Okay, number fifteen, equipment purchase to consider and act upon purchasing four Dell monitors from Dell marketing in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars ninety-six cents. For the justice of the peace precinct one, funds to be used for the justice of the peace technology fund. And Debbie is not here. Um, do you know anything about this, Carrie?
I don't know. I understand actually for Judge Jackson, with the new software, the smaller screens are not displaying well. It's just the resolution, he's mobile or whatever, but they need the, the widescreen to be able to.
So we can look forward to all JP courts asking for this, no, you already have them? Okay, so she was.
I did mine about two years ago.
Okay, so she's the one who did not have the widescreen anymore?
It could be Judge Arvin also, I haven't heard from the others. Same.
Okay. Carrie, how much do we still have in the technology fund? I know that's a, tends to be a healthy balance.
I move we purchase four Dell monitors from Dell marketing in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars ninety-six cents for the justice of the peace precinct one.
Have a second? Have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Equipment donation to consider and act upon accepting the donation in surplus property for the attached list, many of us Texas A and M University for each by the. for use by the Potter County Sheriff's Office. Property will be used for training, class rooms, offices, jail, and firing range. Items will be transferred from them to A&amp;M, the sheriff's office at no cost to us, so no worry.
It's well-利用, but we can still use it, some of it, glad to get it.
Glad for a, of interesting items on here.
Got some good stuff.
We need an elliptical exercise machine, actually, we do, who doesn't, where will that go?
Well, hopefully, the new workout, yeah, and I'm trying.
And the training run, so training, there's a workout, right?
Yeah, we have one now, and more, if you want to go out and.
So they're worried, you know?
I'm gonna make it to the table, that'll be your work. Some of them are dying after they.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donations from the city to the sheriff's office. Who did you get for this?
Church.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Um, zero, thank you very much. Potter County Projects, my name is David Mann. We have one employment item, we consider an act upon the following employment items, IT department hiring and lending, rank, ranking, as an application developer, as a requirement for the laws for infecting November 17, 2015. And then the jail report. Oh, do we need a motion, I'm sorry.
Fire plan of rating.
Second. Have a motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand. We have 561 people in our jail today. 94 females, not key to those were children, 82% felony, 17.5% misdemeanor. Lot of, lot of business.
94 females in our prison, plus one female.
Oh, okay.
All females and children.
Of course, we have top one females. Any county insurance side of the, oh, it's like your session in the agenda office the next time?
Judge, I would just like to publicly thank you and Judge Ford and Scott Lumley, um, all of them served as panel speakers. Two WT students discussed Thursday, it was a policy class, about 30 students in junior, senior year, getting ready to go out to the community and advocate, so we were planning on maybe a one hour of discussion. Three hours later, uh, turned into quite a meeting, and our topic was on truancy, but really how to advocate for change and get involved in the process. So I think from a student perspective, uh, we did share that, you know, it was quite a treat, because they really got a, a good slice of county government and, and kind of what, um, everybody thinks is important in that world. So I want to thank you, Judge, and, um, Judge Ford and Scott for participating in that, that was a good.
It was, it was a lively discussion, wasn't it?
I'm gonna say a thing about the groundbreaking. December 3rd, so we have 1:00, we're gonna have, uh, groundbreaking for the new, uh, Fire Station 3, uh, Saucy Road. Just, uh, a little bit north of, uh, Tascos Road, so. As many people as I can make it, we'd greatly appreciate it.
So 1:00 to allow for ground to warm up?
To be able to break it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And happy Thanksgiving!
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, enjoy your, enjoy your holiday. Okay, thanks, everybody, we are here.